All right, we're ready. Hi, everyone, and welcome to our EMP Town Hall. It is so exciting for us to be with you all. As you may have heard, as you may have seen on our social media, we have taken over for National EMP Network and have are starting on our new journey. We wanted to very much meet everyone who is part of the EMP Network and figure out what our next steps look like. But before we get into what next steps look like, what we are planning to do, what we hope to do, let's talk about who we are. Our new leadership team, as shown, I'm Sierra Van Rikterger. I am based out of New Jersey, but I work in New York at Poster House. And I am very pleased to introduce my co-president, also aptly named Sierra.
Yes, you may have heard of us. We are the Sierras. I'm Sierra Palasar. I am originally from Maryland. And now I live in New Orleans and I am, I work at the Nooka Mart Museum, which is Tulane University's collection as their collections manager. And I'm also the chair of the local EMP chapter here in New Orleans.
And I'm Chloe Doucette. I am the Director of Programs and Engagement at the Museum of Idaho in Idaho Falls, way over here on the West Coast. And I am the newly elected treasurer, interim treasurer for EMP Network, and I'm super excited to be here. I love EMP Network. It's helped me a lot in my journey so far. So I was excited to be a part of the network.
I'm Laura Santoyo. I work as the curator of collections for the Shingothi Center of Rory University. We're a small academic art museum just outside of Chicago. I also teach museum studies there, and I'm very excited to get to know all of you.
And I'm Michelle Reynolds. I'm the Director of Resources. I am based out of Tacoma, Washington. I'm the Director of Marketing and Digital, Director of Digital Marketing at the Tacoma Art Museum. And so, and I'm excited, I'm excited to meet you all as well. Thank you guys so much for coming.
Yes, and you'll notice in our slide that we say "and" you because even though we have five tremendous forces already on this new board, we are looking for folks to kind of round us out and help us in some of the really exciting things that we have planned for this summer. Not just the summer, but this year. And so I am dropping our call for EMP Board members in the chat. So you can take a look at what we're looking for and how you can contribute if you are interested.
And I'll add, as we get started, if anyone has any questions that come up, drop them in the chat and we'll get to them as we go through.
So when you RSVP, we ask folks to kind of share their insights, like ask us anything, ask us whatever you're hoping to get clarity on, so that we can either answer it or we can work together to find answers for them. So how does leadership work at a national level and a local level? How do local chapters select leadership? Are there term limits? So this is a big question. One, because many of us are very new, not very new, but like fairly new to the board, either a year or two in. And at a national level, we're still trying to figure out what leadership looks like for us right now. We are trying to figure out how the best way that we can make sure EMP groups are supported, that you all feel empowered to do the work that you feel you should be doing in the community, and us as a platform, as a space to support that work. At a local level, we have seen a variety of different models that have worked and ones that have not worked. And we have seen local leadership really kind of run with what works best for them. Like, we have more formal groups that have a full board that are like president, vice president, secretary, like the full works. We've had groups that are just chairs. So you have a head chair and then like chairs of different committees. And then we've also had groups where it's a little bit more of a democratic process without like full titles or anything. So it really depends on what's working best for your group. And we very much are mindful of that. We kind of want to make sure that there is a cycling of ideas and a cycling of basically like making sure these EMP groups stay fresh and cognizant of the needs of emerging museum professionals. And so we, as a national organization, have not set term limits, but we know that there are many of the chapters have. So this is on a chapter by chapter basis at this point. Our three areas of focus. Sierra, you want to take this?
Sure. So when we kind of brought the new team together going through this transition, we decided that we needed, we were kind of doing a whole lot of things and that it was, it would be better if we focused on a few kind of core issues that would allow us to kind of build from a smaller like ground up. And so we tried to identify what were the three most important areas of EMP, what our members responded most to, what we thought was the most important in this weird time of 2020. And so we kind of pulled these three themes of community, resources, and advocacy. So community really falls within the chapters, the Facebook group, the any kind of communication and networking that really defines what an EMP network is. Resources, really, really important, of course, for emerging professionals and anyone growing in their career as a place to come together and share resources, share experiences and get crowdsourced information, which we see all the time on our super, super active EMP Facebook page. And trying to kind of take that and build it out and transfer it onto the website, be able to gather ideas that were coming from the Facebook page and putting them on our website with an archive where it would be permanent and can be this really like a nice landing page for resource development. And then advocacy, we do, we do consider ourselves an advocacy organization for young and emerging and growing emergent museum professionals. And our previous advocacy campaigns have been the salary transparency, which has really taken off and we've seen like great strides in that. And I think that was a big part of what we wanted to get from this conversation too, of like, what are the needs of EMPs in today's world? And what should our future advocacy programs look like?
Okay, so we're going to get to all of that and we're going to kind of try to hit each one of those. And as Sierra had mentioned, just if you have more questions, drop them in the chat. But if you did submit a question, we did include them in the presentation. And so we'll try to get to each one of those and answer to the best of our ability. But like we said, we really do hope this is a conversation and that you, you know, share your ideas with us about how to answer some of these questions, because we're really looking to make sure that the group is tailored to all, to everyone who's a part of it. So Laura and I are the two, the only two admins that are approving all the posts on the Facebook group. And we know that there's been, you know, a little bit of frustration in some of the rules that we've come across. So we'll talk more about that. And then Sierra P., Sierra Palasar, is going to talk about chapters. And there were a lot of questions about chapters that were submitted. And so we'll make sure to spend a little more time on that. And that's certainly an area that we want to focus more on as we grow the network in this sort of next phase. So Laura and I are working on a rule revamp for Facebook. We know that a lot of people found it frustrating to not be able to share the things that they were working on or things that they were proud of. I think that rule was initially put in, our no self-promotion rule was initially put in to make sure that we didn't end up with just a page full of spam, because we want to really make sure that that group is a place where conversations happen, where there are questions that are asked and answered, and that really people get to engage in thoughtful discussion as opposed to just sharing out like, here's an event that's happening at my museum. And so we've revamped a little bit with great suggestions from the rest of the board and then hopefully more suggestions as they come from you. But one of the main things that we've changed immediately is that we are doing a Flaunt It Friday, where you get to post whatever sort of fun and interesting things that you are doing on that post and share with everybody. We know a lot of people have been doing cool YouTube channels and blog posts. And so we hope that that will pick up a little speed as we continue to work with it. And people will really go there to look at the cool things that everyone is doing. And that's kind of exciting. Laura, do you want to take it from there and tell about a few other things?
About the rule changes?
Yeah.
That we're talking about? So I know that was kind of a big one. And then I'm trying to think of some of the other ones that we talked about adding. I think really, to be honest, that was kind of the big one was people were frustrated that they couldn't talk about, you know, projects that they were working on, et cetera, personal blogs, you know, personal YouTube channels they were proud of. And then I think really the rest of it, we want to hear from you, you know, what do you want the Facebook page to be? Are there other rules that you feel frustrated by? Do your posts keep getting denied? And you don't quite understand why? I think, you know, that's, that's me, you know, I want to hear from, from y'all, I guess.
One thing we had also chatted about was to allow more dissertations. So like people who are doing school projects that really had spent a lot of time trying to build a discussion around it, we just are hoping that you guys will continue to make sure that you involve the rest of the group in that discussion as we go along. And like Laura said, I totally agree. We want to hear from you. If there's something that's frustrating you, you know, we really want to make sure that we look at addressing that. So do let us know. And then to kind of wrap up our, some of our social media stuff, we do have a Twitter and it is being posted on by the board members that are here, especially Sierra V., I think. And is that true, Sierra? And that's @NEMPNetwork. And we just got an Instagram like right as we started. So follow us on Instagram. We are going to work to build out those platforms too, because we know Facebook is, although it is where our largest community is, it's maybe not what everyone is on these days. And so we're working to kind of build that out too, and also figure out ways that we can build up the whole network, you know, people that work in different museums and different regions and the chapters by kind of leveraging those other social media platforms. And, you know, maybe we're still developing our strategies there, but definitely getting, you know, more involvement from the chapters and other people in that as well. Anything we missed, guys, about the social before we head on to chapter support? Okay, sweet. So I'll let Sierra just talk a little bit more about general overview of chapter support before we head on to questions for this section.
Yeah. So kind of where chapters lie right now is that we have maybe close to 50 chapters that are all really kind of working independently. And we did a survey, I want to say about a year ago, kind of asking what the local chapters, how they want the national group, what that relationship would look like. What we got from that was a lot of the chapters pretty much wanted to be left alone. They didn't want too much meddling from a national group. But what they did want is some support. So that's kind of what we're, we're looking at, how can we support the chapters in a way that still lets them to be autonomous and self-marketing and self-running and self-managing, but still have this national tie and have an identity that is a national identity. So I see in the comment, Madeline asked a great question, which is kind of creating a guide for best practices, which is something we are actually very actively working on right now. The goal in terms of chapters right now is to come up with like, what is the essence of EMPs? You know, something that's going to cover mission and core values, of course, and then use that as kind of these like guidelines, this framework that then individual chapters can use that. They'll be able, then be able to kind of use that as a guide to self-manage and then can still come to EMP when they do, the national group, when they do need support. We are also a 501(c)(3) and we're looking into how the local chapters can utilize that as well in terms of fundraising, or if we do want to come up with some system for distributing funds to the individual chapters to do their programming. I would say with COVID, we're kind of rethinking a little bit of programming, which I think everybody is doing and trying to really think through the chapters and what does networking look like as we move forward into this weird world? But yeah, so we have reached out to a couple of groups and getting a lot of feedback from some individual chapters and kind of using that to build that guide. And what we are really looking for is the chapters together writing this guide. We don't want to be like the five of us on this board writing a guide and telling everybody how they have to operate. We want to get this real like collaborative guideline that works for everybody. So I'd love to hear some feedback from the group too. If people have ideas, things they hate, things they love, send us an email, write it in the chat. We'll get a good conversation going. And we hope to have that ready in, I'd say, soonly.
Okay, so we had a couple of questions here. The first one was from Zachary M. in the Western Region, said, is there a way to connect and network with members who work in specific museum professions within EMP, like exhibit designers, collections, management, educators, et cetera? Is this something that the board or members see merit in? And I'll kind of start on that one, but feel free to jump in, guys. I definitely see merit in kind of having that opportunity to share more information. And I think that you know, with, with the social aspect is going to tie in really tightly with this new resources. Basically, section that we're going to put on our website, we're working on revamping that. But definitely, I think that having the opportunity to look at some of those frequently asked questions and, you know, have conversations in a specific realm is useful. What I will say is that I'm a little hesitant, and you guys, like I said, chime in, but I'm a little hesitant to do any sort of split off groups about specific sections of museum work, just because I think that there is a lot of merit in being able to learn about other fields of museum work as emerging museum professionals, because I know that a lot of our community members are people that are still working on getting their degrees, folks that are hoping to, you know, kind of figure out where a museum career might take them. And so I'd hate to take all of that information off of kind of the main page, but I definitely see merit in kind of calling the resources in a way that allows you to look specifically at exhibit questions or specifically at collections management. And if you have a great idea about how to organize that so that that can happen in real time, besides just, you know, happening as we add to the resources page, please let us know. We'll continue to look into that. I think this was a really great suggestion. So.
I agree. This was a really good suggestion. And I do want to point out that there are some regional groups or specific profession groups that do have EMP chapters that are slowly kind of forming their way into the EMP network. And so as those come and as we onboard new chapters, that might pop up if you're looking for something specific that might come to be.
Okay, so our next question was, there's kind of several, so we might answer them in stages or call back to an answer that we had previously. But the first one here is, will there be more opportunities for chapters to collaborate with each other? And that's from Ariana Y. from the Southeastern Region. So I'll let Sierra take that one.
Yeah, I could take that question. So we've kind of revamped a little bit the way that we are organizing the board. If any of you have seen the call for board members, what we are trying to organize are regional chairs within that would sit on our board and then be responsible for being a liaison for all the people, all the local chapters within that region. And one of the ideas and reasoning we came up with this was to allow for those collaborations. So to get, you know, DC and Baltimore together to do programs together because they are geographically close. Or talking about issues that are really relevant. Here in New Orleans in the South, we deal a whole lot with hurricanes, which isn't super relevant in, you know, Michigan, but is pretty important down here and is a way that we can collaborate. And so there are these kind of regional ways that we're looking to partner different EMP chapters together. We've talked about doing kind of sort of like an EMP mentorship, but of chapters. So pairing what we would rank as like a super, super successful and active chapter with maybe a chapter that is just starting out or has low membership and kind of pairing them together in a way that they can learn from, learn from each other and like build a strong network that way. And yes, I think as we are moving online, we're going to see a lot more opportunities for online collaborations as well.
That's at least one benefit of everyone getting used to using online platforms for communication. So we hope to kind of leverage that, that newfound, I guess, ability, those newfound abilities of everyone in COVID world.
Yeah, absolutely. Sierra, did you have anything to add to that? That I didn't already say?
No, I think that like you really hit on everything. And again, we're really hoping that once we onboard our new board members for the regional, like our regional directors, that they will be part of that process of providing that like intimate connection for chapters in a region. And then as like groups kind of speak and we get to know you all better, we can kind of cross-region discuss and like right now, like the big plan is like organization, like everything is everywhere right now. And we're trying to make sure that everyone is seen, heard, all of your information is correct, that you have everything that you need to be functional and to be as supportive as possible. So we just want to make sure that we get those things together and then, and then go from there. But absolutely, we are definitely looking into ways for chapters to collaborate.
Okay, so our next one is just kind of on a larger scale. How will NEMPN manage their international relationships with groups outside of the USA moving forward? From Madeline S., International Region. I, you know, I think, I'll just say one more time, we're really working on those resources. We're working on building social more so that it's not just Facebook, so that Twitter and Instagram are options for people as well. And hopefully that will allow more of those international voices to be heard. But do we have anything in the works chapter-wise? I know we are looking, if somebody's interested to be a board member from the international region, we'd definitely be interested in that.
Yeah, we are looking for one of those regional chairs to kind of be the catch-all for the international groups. And yeah, I mean, I think the idea of the partnerships between the international groups and the American groups can be really rich and ripe as well. And
Yeah, we want to, we definitely want to like still chat with our international groups. I know that there's like a huge subset of EMP groups that are all based in the UK right now that like used to be part of our network, but kind of left because like our things weren't aligned. So we'd love to like bring them back into this network in some way. We, well, I want to speak for myself, but I want to say for the whole board that GoEMP is amazing. And I actively engage with their group, just not only because I spend a lot of time in Toronto or in Ontario, but also just because they're just a great group. So yes, we definitely want to make sure that international relationships are maintained. And we also know that there are groups that are not specific to a location. As I mentioned before, some chapters are, you know, specific to groups. And so one that is coming to mind is that there are some groups that are now coming for more nationally, more nationally like involved groups. And so like they are having an EMP chapter. We want to make sure that that chapter is also treated with as much attention as one of our regional chapters. So they, that the board director for International will also have those multi-region chapters as well. So we are very much aware of those folks who are national, they don't have one specifically.
Okay, so we've got a couple more. This one, I think, was a little bit covered in that last question or the second question. How can we connect more with our other regional EMP chapters from Brook G. in the Southeastern Region? And then I'm just going to go ahead and pair this one with it. Are there any EMP chapters that have managed to build close working relationships with other EMP chapters through communications or collaborations? That's from, and well, A. from the Western Region.
Well, um, in terms of EMP chapter relations, I don't know, Sierra, do you have an answer to that one? I know that we did talk to the DC group and we do know that DC and Baltimore have done some group events together. The regional museum associations also is a resource and other groups that seem to have partnered quite a lot with different EMP chapters. So instead of kind of coming, bringing that region together by going through like a state association, some chapters have had more success with that than others. It's kind of like adding this other big bureaucracy into the mix a little bit. And then in terms of connecting, I mean, I think it's a lot of what we just talked about and creating, I think, again, we're going to be doing more of these online events. We've all gotten pretty used to Zoom at this point. So a way to not just have an EMP meeting in your hometown, but to be able to do some online. And, you know, maybe that's similar to this discussion, but a little less official and stuffy.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say that there is, I want to answer like three of these questions all at once, just because, one, I know we have a lot more to go through and two, they're all related. So Sierra's kind of answered, Sierra and Chloe and the other board members have kind of answered about the close working relationships, the communications and collaborations. Again, the dream with the regional director is that they're going to have someone who's in that region, who's like really connecting you all on a regular basis already. And so then you're able to kind of talk. Also, for updating chapter-related information, Sierra and I are very much in our like documents, trying to make sure that we are trying to make sure, like trying to update that information. So many of you have come back and given us updates on like who's there, who's not there. We want this process to be more seamless. And we also want you all to have access to that information so that like you can have those conversations with the people in those groups as opposed to just like you reporting to us your chapters and like what's happening. Like, we want to make sure that there's like communication between us, between you all, and that this document is kind of like an evergreen thing that you can all update as you need.
Yeah, and I would add to that, like, it doesn't have to be like, oh, if one group wants to talk to another group, they have to come to us to do that. We do want this, you know, this free flow where everybody can kind of reach out to each other on their own and you know, we're here to support when needed, but we don't have to be the facilitator. Unless you want us to.
And then also I want to talk about EMP restructuring so we can support better local chapters. I think we've talked about this a lot in this past couple of minutes in terms of like, we really want to make sure that like we are providing resources more like guidelines and support in terms of governance, and then also thinking about like creating relationships between chapters, between national, and then building those relationships out so that they can go with like larger museum associations, with regional museum associations and like with one another and like making sure that like we are serving EMP and EMPs to the best of our ability, whatever it is that you are looking for at this time. So what in the future, what local chapters will have to report on going forward, we can't say. We know that we are looking to improve our chapter updates information so that you can, we know who is on your board, when your board elections are, all that stuff in a more regular and like neat way. But also, we want to make sure that you know, when you have events, when you are doing really amazing programs, that that information is shared out. And now that we are all virtual, like if you're doing a virtual EMP program, there's no reason why other people from like, if you're hosting something in like Nebraska, I'm sorry, I see Nebraska in the chat, but like if you're hosting something in Nebraska, that why someone from like Georgia couldn't attend? Like, you just want to make sure that everyone is as close-knit as possible. We want to share out those events. And then, of course, we want to share out about you all so that when folks start to join the museum field, they're like, okay, I want to start museums. Where do I start? They have an EMP group to go to.
So before we switch to the next slide, one other thing I just wanted to add in that we haven't chatted about a ton, but I think is kind of important and goes along with what Sierra was saying was that you know, we are hoping that we also can continue to, once we're post-COVID world, continue to facilitate meetups at the major museum conferences like AM and WMA and MAA, all of the regional ones as well. And so you know, we haven't always been involved in their EMP meetups, but it is something that all of the regional organizations are trying to facilitate, especially, I've noticed that more and more as we've, as the years have gone by to create these EMP meetups. And so we want to kind of make sure that that's shared within our entire network so that that's a resource for you. And also that we're there to help, you know, And also that we're, we're there to help, you know, facilitate those events as well. Okay. So that's on to resources and I'll just hand it over to you, Michelle.
Awesome. So resources, we touched on it a little bit already, sort of jumping ahead to thinking about how we actually assemble all of the things that people are sharing online and the Facebook group and things like that into one sort of cohesive place. So that idea of revamping that sections of our website to better reflect that and be more frequently updated is a large part of what my responsibilities are on the board. And then I'm also tangentially involved in Theory and Practice, which is our sort of publishing journal that I believe we've had two editions of at this point, and then a future newsletter project. So we can go. Thanks. So Theory and Practice, right now we're sort of in exploratory stage. So what I think we'll be doing in the next, in the, in the next couple of months is putting together the committee to think about how, what our theme will be and how we can push ahead. I did a bit of peer editing on the project in the last two iterations. And it's just, it's, it's so far been a really great opportunity for people to get their work published. And so I think that that definitely still has a benefit, especially for emerging museum professionals who maybe don't have another space in which to readily get their foot in the door. So we'll be reviving those conversations and doing calls for participation and potential, and then later requests for proposals and papers afterwards. So keep an eye out for that as we sort of formulate what it looks like in the coming weeks. And then as far as the newsletter goes, this is where I'm going to be a catch-all kind of space to touch base with folks who are interested in hearing more, catching up on resources, finding articles, different sorts of pointing them to different places where they can get involved in conversations and stay up to date on the things that we're doing as a national chapter, but also things that are going on more in the digital spaces that we've kind of all been talking about. So ultimately, the, the resources, we're just trying to make sure that we're congregating things in one space so that maybe if there's a catch-all for either different sorts of museum departments that you work in or big questions about job searches, professional development, other sorts of big topic items, that we can kind of cover them there and then get into a little bit more nuanced conversations in other spaces. But the newsletter will really be this way that we can keep those conversations going outside of Facebook groups and other things like that. So it's just another touch point in addition to the social media stuff that we've talked about a little bit earlier. Just in the interest of time, we've moved sort of clearly through some questions. So we got quite a few about supporting museum professionals in this time. You know, how can we support those graduating from museum-related undergraduate and graduate courses? Museum field looks bleak right now and due to a lot of budgets, state internships and positions may be scarce. I don't want to kill any hopes and dreams, but what's the best way to be realistic about this? From Haley M. in the Midwestern region, followed closely by Amanda's question from the Northeastern region about how can we earnestly support EMPs and their job searches when everything's becoming less available and more competitive? And this is the kind of space where I think the board and, or at least myself, I can speak for myself in saying that this is the kind of space where the resources section can be really helpful. And continued monitoring of job boards and things like that can sort of direct you in a space. They can also provide opportunities for professional development, things that we see, whether they are digital classes or what have you that folks are sharing around, can be kind of pointed in that direction. Because we maybe won't have the answers, but there'll at least be that support system there that I think a lot of folks have come to know and appreciate about EMP. And so we kind of see that resources section as something that'll help continue this conversation and give people at least a little bit of support as they're navigating this very tumultuous time. I mean, it's, it's definitely difficult across the sector. And I think the same would be true for looking for jobs across the country. Those are some of the best posts that, I mean, as a person who recently had to do that, it's been great to see other people's stories and sort of interact. So I think that again, a resource section would be really, really helpful in that way to sort of spawn that conversation. I'm not sure if anybody else has anything to add on those spaces, but.
I would add, you know, a while ago, we did the museum studies review, which was not so much in terms of like job hunting, but I think an attempt to make a really honest assessment of the hundreds of museum studies programs that are out there. And using that kind of as a way to demonstrate as well the difficulties, I think, of the museum field. Because the reality is, is we are in a challenging field where there are not a lot of jobs and there are a lot of people graduating with these degrees. And, you know, what we can offer is resources and then communication and connection. So really creating a, a network where people can speak very freely, openly, off the record, a, a contact sheet perhaps is what that looks like. But the reality is, is we are in a bleak state and the five of us at the board are not going to magically be able to like solve the job problems. But I think like being, to being able to be upfront about that and creating a, a place that it's a safe place to talk about those struggles. I know just for myself personally, like having someone to vent to sometimes is just like what you need, somebody who understands. And so really just kind of creating like a resource page, but also I think the community is really important in that conversation as well.
And I think that definitely ties into one of the questions I see in the chat from Sally about this idea of sort of peer mentoring and professional development in that way. And that's a kind of space where when we can continue to facilitate those conversations, at least at the national level, we can make connections across sort of spaces in ways that we maybe weren't, weren't able to before with only in-person and can continue to build in those sorts of spaces where we can share and figure out different ways that we can swap information that may be super subject-specific or even, and all the way up to more generalized ideas.
Yeah. And I would add, that's something we're trying to add to the chapter guides as well. Because in the past, like EMP has, like as the national group, hasn't done resumes or mentorships or all those different training programs, but a lot of the local chapters have. So what we're kind of doing also in this process through digging through the chapters is kind of getting a sense of what are the successful events, what are the different types of events? So then if a local chapter wants to do a resume workshop, we can go to the three EMP groups that have already done that and have a guideline that we can then send and say, hey, go talk to this chapter because they did this event and it was super successful. So you're right, I think like the digital does open this up to being national workshops, which could be really interesting as well. I do like that idea.
That ties in perfectly to our next question. So we sort of touched on professional development and training opportunities. So we'll see how those kind of hand out as we look ahead, especially as sort of a, using the national level as sort of a congregator of all of those different, or an aggregator of all those different spaces that are doing that work already, and kind of sharing them more widely. And then thinking about how like these, the questions about international museum education and how that plays out in the US. So, you know, how have you as an international museum educator, working in the US, adapted to the cultural differences and incorporated them into your practices as educators? Any tips from Sarah in the Northeastern region? This is the best kind of question. I hate to be sort of like a broken record talking about the beauty of, of really aggregating our resources. But this is the kind of space where that really plays in so nicely. And the ideas that have been floated earlier in our town hall about, you know, organizing them by subject, organizing them by specialty, things like that. That provides a more narrowed down space for you to go to find either points of reference to answer these or at least people to touch base with or expand upon. As a person who loves the Facebook group so much, I often also find it very overwhelming. And the search function is wonderful, but if I don't know exactly how something was phrased or whatever, I get really lost and then I just kind of give up. And that's totally on me. But I think that when we start to think more broadly about how we can make those resources available elsewhere, not only can we point people to them, but we can also continue to have those conversations. So the same would be true for the second question about how have you dealt with the feeling of wanting to merge your own cultural and historic background with the one of the US through educational programs? The idea of being able to share those success stories as well as all the experimentation that goes into putting together something like that is great for conversations on any digital platform. But we can also have case studies that we can point to maybe that other folks have shared out in different sorts of resource sections. So these all definitely point us in the direction of knowing that this is something that people have been waiting for and looking for. And how we can build up that section of our website will be very helpful. And will require, I think, a lot of input from different people sharing stuff as we move through the process.
I will say too, you'll have to be just a little patient with us. We are, you know, hoping to get new board members on to help with this as well. It's not going to happen overnight, but we are working really hard to make sure that happens. So advocacy.
So in talking about advocacy, there's a million things happening right now. And I think that folks have brought up so many things in the chat that are really directly related to, you know, and some of the comments that have, have come up are like, what is the future of this field? Like what are, like what are we doing for EMPs? And the question is, we're not sure yet, but we want to do it with you all. Like we don't want to dictate to you what we think you need because we know as much as you do, we're EMPs programming for EMPs. So we want to make sure that folks are able to get the support that they need and that we're advocating for you long-term and short-term. So Salary Transparency is a project that the past board has taken on. And we've seen it explode in the last few years. We've seen, not only is EMP requiring salaries on our jobs board, we are also now like part of a larger group of, of museum-related groups that are requiring salaries and sharing and advocating for folks to share their salaries. And so that's still something we care about. We also have a project where if you find a job posting without a salary range, that you can submit it to us via form and we will, like one of us will reach out to them. That's currently on hold because as you, as you may have noticed, there's five of us and we're doing a lot of things. And so that's currently on hold, but we do plan to bring that back once we build out our board. We are also really focusing on unpaid internships. This is a hill we are willing to die on. And so we are really trying to not only advocate for creating resources to help individuals find paid internships, but we're also really help trying to work with emerging EMPs. Are those like mid-career EMPs who are just like, just now starting to become internship coordinators or starting to get some responsibility at their institutions to advocate for not having unpaid internships and finding ways to pay their, to pay interns? And so we are still actively doing this work. We're going to continue doing this work. We're going to continue talking about unpaid internships and trying to fix this from like, we want to talk about this at the graduate school level, we want to talk about this at the museum level, we want to talk about this for students. Like we want, we want to touch on this for all things. So please know that this is something we care about and that we're really going to work on.
I would add for the DC folks, because I used to be one, contractors also advocating against that.
So how do we transform EMP into a movement that supports and advocates for museum workers? A great question. We are working on that. We want to make sure that, as we said, the hill we're going to die on, especially for me personally, I will speak for the rest of the board, but I know that they feel similarly. We're willing to die on this unpaid internship hill and we're also willing to die on the salary transformative, salary transparency hill. There are other issues in the museum field. I think folks have brought up professional development. Folks have brought up like so many different things that are happening to EMPs. And like we, we're working on it. We, we see everything that's happening. Also, in case anyone hasn't been on Twitter or Instagram, the museum field is mobilizing and they're mobilizing quick. So we are trying to make sure, where does EMP fit in all of that? The jobs board work has been great. Has there been any consideration of expanding that push into unpaid, into museum studies programs to stop requiring? So we have not done a push to museum studies programs, but I know that that is something that this museum studies programs are talking about. And then we, we want to work with, you know, we want to work with the museum studies programs to try to work against this, this process. And if it's not an unpaid internship, how are we ensuring that EMPs are getting skills that they need? So this is a larger conversation. And again, if you're really interested in doing this work with us, please apply to be on the board or send us an email because there's so much work to be done right now. It's just a team of five. We're hoping to build that out, but like, if we're doing this nationally for so many people, we want to have as many people involved as possible.
And in parentheses, I'll just add that as we get the board, after we get the board together, we want to form committees as well. So it won't just be like the 10 board members, but there'll be groups of people. So really, everybody can get involved in leadership and have these different subcommittees to kind of address these issues together.
Definitely. And I think that Sally has brought up a good point in the comments as well as like, for those of us who don't have the ability to go to the museum studies programs, like what is, what is entering the field look like? And that's, again, this goes into that larger conversation of like, what are we doing? How are we changing the field? What does the field look like in the future? We want to make sure that we're doing the work to make sure that it's as equitable and accessible as possible. And so again, if you have thoughts and feelings, send us an email or apply to be on the board or do both, both are great. And then how to involve museum professionals who have suffered layoffs during this time? Please know that you are welcome in EMP. Please know that you're welcome to, to be on our jobs board. Please, please continue to have conversations in the Facebook group. Join the board so that we can kind of continue to support, continue having these conversations. And we want to make sure that, you know, we can't fix the larger layoff problem, but we want to make sure that as folks kind of are laid off, that like we are giving you the tools that you need to either find work either outside of the field, in the field again. And I think that something was brought up earlier around like, we need to start creating like professional developments or resources for folks to get back in the swing of things or learn additional skills. So like, that's something we are, I, I made note of it, that's something we're going to look into. But we are still trying to figure out the best way to support the, the folks who are being laid off and the folks who are trying to, to get experience. It's a work in progress. Do we plan to support or discuss museum unions? Yes. I don't know what that's going to look like quite yet. As I mentioned, we, we have, we've only had a couple of things that we've been able to like identify as, as things that we want to work on. And again, it's five of us right now, but we, we do want to talk more about this, maybe host some PDs and some lectures on it. There's, there's definitely a lot of room to talk. And now we open the, the table to you all. So we know that many of you are here muted or just in the chat. If you're open, you know, you can either answer, you can either type it in the chat or you can kind of unmute yourself or, or share, you know, what are you passionate about? Where should we be focusing our new advocacy efforts? We want to hear from you.
I want to hear Sally's ideas on equity.
Hey, y'all. Happy to share some ideas. I've been toying around in ways of better empowering our community to provide our own. And so there's, it's kind of a spin-off of digital badging. Where within EMP, if we provide professional development resources, for example, we have some very emerging professionals, but we have a lot of mid-professionals and those acquiring skills or those just starting to acquire skills that are then going to be able to turn around and say, hey, look, okay, I can do this. Let me teach you. And so I think that might be able to pave a way of creating a badging system that might be able to break into some of that experience field where those who don't have the ability to take unpaid internships or even be in some of the larger programs, provide some of that insight, but then also something for a resume of, hey, I attended this professional development or I wrote an article for the newsletter. I think that's great. As well as potentially looking at various aspects of our field. And okay, if you have done this, if you can do this, and looking at qualifiers that maybe aren't museum-specific, but that transfer as a way of building some of those badging credentials that potentially, hopefully, we can get the professional world to take seriously and look at and say, oh, okay, it's an EMP badge, which means X, Y, Z. So they are proficient or they are, they have this. And I think, and one of the best things that's come of COVID is this digital platform and being able to connect and make that a lot more equitable, especially like even talking about conferences and having meetup groups. If you can do those virtually, because a lot of students, a lot of emerging professionals can't attend those conferences. Even as a working professional, I often can't attend those conferences unless my employer thinks it's important enough. And a lot of times. And a lot of times employers don't think it's important enough. Um, so having digital meetups, more Zoom conferences, I think is, is amazing. So my two cents and then some.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to share? I just want to make a note that Tamara, and I'm sorry if I pronounced that incorrectly. My passion is archaeological collections. Since I'm from an archaeology background, I want to help museums be able to catalog these collections and make them accessible to researchers in the public, which is amazing. Um, anyone else wants to share what they're passionate about? Um, and any advocacy efforts they'd like to, to see? To see us kind of pursue in the next year.
Um, so my name's Sarah Rowley. I go by Rowley because there's always another Sarah in the room. Um, and you know, before COVID hit, my big, my soapbox that I stood on was salary soapbox. Um, specifically that in this field, salaries are artificially low and it's absurd because it also on, you know, it's limiting who has access to the field and that also limits what we're able to do. Because it's limiting our perspectives that if you have to be able to afford to work in a museum, then that's going to be very few people. Um, so that was one of my major concerns and now it's, you know, just, you know, how can we keep our museums in existence? And keep, you know, and get those jobs back. So one of the things, especially when we start looking at things like how many, you know, museum study, how many people want to enter this field? And we keep looking at it as if it's a fixed pot, like there's only so many jobs. How can we advocate for the growth of our profession? And for the growth of the field? How can we restructure our thinking about this? So that we're not saying they're going, there are too many graduates, but instead we're saying, okay, let's bring all these people in and create this amazing network of museums across our, across the world, in our country, but yes, the world. So thinking about advocacy, I'm wondering what we can be doing with philanthropy and development and fundraising to create new structures so that people can be paid fair wages, living wages to be in this field. And that we can create more positions and really develop out and expand and come up with amazing things. So there's my soapbox.
I would, you know, just to comment on that, I mentioned it really early at the beginning is that we are a 501(c)(3), which means we are eligible to apply for grants, which means we are allowed to do fundraising. And obviously that's not solving your soapbox issue, but internally within new EMPs, there is opportunity for some development, which can be, you know, where what we do with that money, how we redistribute is really up for conversation, but I just wanted to throw that out there as well.
Agreed.
And I guess we'll jump into like, as the new interim treasurer, we are looking at ways to potentially increase the funding that we have, you know, whether that is like fund different sort of campaigns that EMPs are interested in and get something cool out of, or whether it's a membership program or something like that, that then those dollars can be funneled directly to people who actually need them. You know, to maybe fund a scholarship to go to a conference or to take a class or to, you know, be able, be able to do the things that we all want to do in the field, but very few of us have the opportunity to do. Um, so that we are looking into ways to do that too. We're just, we want to make sure that we do it right and not just hastily because again, we know that it's not a field where a lot of people make a lot of money. So we want to make sure that what we do is purposeful and, and appropriate.
Yes. And I also see Madeline with her virtual hand raised. So I want to make sure you are able to chat.
Hi, I'm not going to turn on my video because I'm looking particularly bedraggled today. Humidity is very high, so please forgive me. Hi, my name is Madeline. I'm calling in from Ontario. I'm the chair of the Group of Ontario Emerging Museum Professionals Committee. First of all, thank you so much for allowing me to join in as kind of an international representative. This is so exciting and it's been wonderful to hear from you folks and from everybody else in the chat. I wanted to respond a little bit to the new advocacy efforts question that's on the screen right now. We, um, the GoEMP committee did a survey of Ontario EMPs kind of near the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, asking, you know, what can we do for you? How do you feel? You need to be supported right now by us. What, what the heck can we do for you? And we formed kind of an advocacy plan based on some of the answers you received. And of course, folks said, you know, please offer us opportunities for professional development, which we've really tried to work hard on, but also one really poignant thing that came through was that we really, the EMP community in Ontario, and I think elsewhere as well, I think a lot of American EMPs will be feeling the same way. A lot of folks really want there to be higher level advocacy. So making the EMP cause better known to those in our case provincial organization, but for you folks, statewide organizations, national organizations, sharing information with them and just making them even more aware, the fact that you folks exist, you're doing such beautiful, important, empowering work. And I think that some of those higher level groups that are formalized as a state or national institution or organization will then maybe be able to pick up the reins and provide a little bit more for EMPs beyond what you folks can do yourselves as well. So not only advocating for the individual, but also advocating at a more of a structural level. Because we can only go so far as individuals. I mean, I fully believe in the power of every individual and how far you can go. But I think it's also really important to, to kind of look beyond and also look at the structures that are perhaps keeping things the way that they are. I know that's a really big idea and terribly daunting. But we kind of, we've tried our best to come up with a couple of initiatives. I'm happy to elaborate on at another time and share within the MPN. But we've tried to come up with a couple of strategies to do so just to raise awareness at that higher level so that those structures can start to be broken down and and our issues made known to them. Thank you.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Thank you.
For those who don't know, like the history of EMP is that we actually used to be part of AAM. And they kind of decided that they were going to stop supporting and that's when we split and became our own institution. But we have been talking recently about, I think, kind of to the point that you just made of at least not necessarily reintegrating, but re-establishing our foothold as experts in this kind of work. I know that AAM lists us as their partner and like when you go to emerging museum professionals within the AAM website, it takes you to our website. But at the same time, they leave us behind a lot. So I, I think you made a great point of trying to just stand taller and be noticed more like getting the, the seat at the table is pretty important.
Definitely. And I also want to make a note that we are also looking for a website slash marketing person because our brand has to be improved. And so we also want to make sure that like, we're not just improving our, our physical presence in spaces, but also our presence like to be taken more seriously. I know that like me being like, our brand is like absurd, but like brand recognition is huge. And I, I think that there is like, we, we, you already recognize like AAM's colors, you know, the colors of your regional organization, you know, like the, the aesthetics, like you, you like, we all know the importance of, of a good brand and how far it will carry an organization or a business. So like, we are looking for someone to help us in that work as well as we start to grow because we want to make sure that when we start getting our traps out there, when we start getting a little more street cred and recognition that, you know, we look like not just emerging museum professionals, but emerging museum professionals who have their shit together.
Well, what everyone, oh, go ahead, go ahead. I, I was just saying, I wanted to call Cassandra's comments. She was talking about being really passionate about diversity, equity, accessibility and inclusion. And that's obviously something that are part of EMP's core values, but are definitely something that is, you know, a necessary conversation now and as it's always been, but really something that we're trying to make sure is front and center in terms of our conversations these days. Um, and so, you know, if you have more ideas about that, we'd love to hear them as well.
Yeah. And again, please, 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 if you want to make change at the national level, like we're going to be reaching out to all of the chapters in some capacity over the next few months. And so we want to make sure that that, you know, if you're a chapter that has been doing a lot and you're like, well, our chapter is in pretty good shape. We are interested in making some change. Please join the board, or even if you're just an individual who's not part of a chapter, please come in to, please come in and, and help us anyway. This is like a truly a grassroots effort to rebuild EMP network. Um, Naomi Neal asked a question where they asked, how can EMP advocate for people who have been laid off in the museum profession due to COVID lockdowns? Great question. Um, I, we do not have answers right now. Um, I think one thing that I can personally say is that you should look into some of the mutual aid, mutual aid funds that have gone up. And I think EMP could be amplifying those a little bit more. So some of them are museum workers speak. There is art administrators of color. There is for, for New York City folks, there's like the New York City Arts and Education Roundtable that just put out one. Um, I know that there's different museums that have mutual aid funds and so we want to look into that. But then we also want to make sure that you folks outside of just like the general idea of money, I think the other things that we've kind of been talking about are one, making sure we are amplifying the need for these people to be rehired and that you're rehired at the appropriate level, not like half of your job. And then we should also be advocating for continued advocacy for salary transparency, for reviewing job descriptions, making sure that we're not doing like eight people's jobs when we get back to work. And then, um, I, I, I'm truly just like going off the top of my head. I imagine that once we all sit down, myself, the other board members and then our future board members, we can come up with a much better plan for how we can best support folks who've been laid off. But if you have ideas, please let us know. And if you want to go forward in some slides. Um, again, please join the board. Please apply. We have the application that was sent out. Um, I do want to bring up Tamara's comment. I worry that museums are going to have the funding to rehire when everything reopens. How do we advocate for better funding in the field? Um, that's a great question. I think we would just have to, we need to just continue to be part of these conversations and EMP needs to be a very loud voice in the conversations that are happening. Not just with other museum groups, but also with like AAM. And just being like, in, in talking, and just being very like open about what's happening, like we're getting most of our funding from foundations and in government sources is, is really what the situation is. I, I, there are very few museums to work off of earned revenue. And so it's like, how do we talk to foundations? How do we talk to larger groups to make sure we're getting funding? And so that goes back to a previous comment about advocacy at the government level and then also talking about reaching out to funders, seeing how we can how, what we can do to get better funding for the museum field. So this is a big picture question, but we like big picture questions and we want to talk about them with you all some more.
Get some of that Amazon money.
Yeah. Want Google money.
Yep. I was just going to ask, um, maybe if we can do like, I think there's a way to do a vote on here, just raise your little hand. How do people feel about doing, um, more of these town halls, like maybe a little less structured in terms of slides, but maybe making this a little bit more frequent, just to kind of have a group brainstorm and open it up to the wider audience. Is that something that sounds good or like just too much work? Couple raised hands.
I also want to bring out the comment, more frequent, more open quarterly. I love that. I want to bring up Chrisha's comment. What is EMP's commitment to diversifying the field? I want to say that absolutely we are committed to diversifying the field. I'm also committed to diversifying this board. So again, if you are a BIPOC person, please apply, but also, um, diversifying the field is, is a hill that I personally am going to die on. And so I know that EMP will also die on that hill as well. So please know that we are very much committed to it and we're looking into all options to ensure more diversity in all areas of the field. Okay, people want more town halls. Give the people what they want. Right.
Has anyone ever reached out? Um, like at the high school level even? I mean, I think we talk about EMPs a lot in terms of people going into museum studies fields. It, it was a thought I just had with the, the question of diversifying the field. And like, at what point do you start courting museum professionals? At what part do you make the field supportive from like the very beginning? Alyssa suggested last year, little interest, maybe undergrad? I don't know.
Yeah, I know, um, our museum studies program, we go and do presentations in the communities at the local high schools and kind of what Alyssa said, we get, you know, very little interest. We get a couple of people who seem interested and, you know, we give them the brochures and we tell them to reach out to us and we give them tours and we let them behind the scenes and, you know, we get a couple fishies that way, but I, I have found personally that I get more bites with undergrads when I catch them as freshmen. But, you know, so.
Yeah, I, I love that. And I think that, yep, I see HBCUs are definitely overlooked, overlooked in museum fields. I see a lot of comments about high school being hard. I would love if EMP kind of started our own thing, like if we had our own virtual kind of like event that we were just like, if you want to know about museums, come visit, please come talk to us. Um, and we can kind of gather all of our resources so that folks could be like East Coast, West Coast and everyone in between. Please come to our, like, we can have a couple of different sessions and like, we can bring in people from our communities to be like, we have, we have a curator from California and we have like a collections manager from like Minnesota and then we have like, we have like a archivist from New York, but like, we want to make sure the, that we are like talking to all these folks. That we can get as many people in the door. We want to also show folks with different identities so that like, that people can see that like, oh, it's not just like white people who work in museums. It's like, it's, it's, you know, it's, everyone works in museums. Like, we want to get everyone in there. Um, Death to Museums is fantastic. Um, big fans. Also unhealthy plug, but was, talked about unpaid internships at Death to Museums. So just so you know. Um, so the, I think that, yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot to do. There's a lot to do. So I, I think that I love all these ideas. I think we're going to keep having town halls because there's so many ideas coming in. But I think there is definitely interest in, in talking about the future of the field with folks who might be interested. And there's definitely interest in creating resources and talking to folks who are towards the end of their like discovery period, whether that's museum studies, programs, or some other way of getting into the field.
But I think, you know, like that, that comment of like the decolonizing of museums probably goes really hand in hand with diversifying the field and kind of reaching, I think that they're, they're kind of the same conversation in a lot of ways. And I think it would be really interesting as a, for EMPs as a group to kind of come up with strategies that we can then take to our own individual workplaces to kind of have those harder conversations with the old guard that is maybe still stuck in their very like white wall, white cube way of thinking. the old guard that is maybe still stuck in their very like white wall, white cube um, way of thinking. An idea that I had that has come out of a bunch of different sort of comments here, including this idea of um, you know, how, how do we make sure that we are, you know, not only encouraging diverse voices in um, the museum field, but also inviting diverse voices into museums in general. I saw somebody make a comment, um, I think maybe Hannah about her uh, thesis on, you know, kind of how museums communicate and through their labels and everything. And I thought maybe it could be something that we look at to put together, um, maybe like appropriate job description templates for all these different, like, you know, for curators in the field and for director of exhibitions and educators so that we make sure that those important things like talking about, you know, this commitment to making sure that, you know, collections are are not just, we're not just collecting things from old white dudes, you know, old straight white dudes that did, you know, whatever back when. We, we make sure that there's, you know, more information for museums to draw off of as we um, look at kind of how, how uh, when, when they're putting out these job descriptions, they actually can draw off of something instead of saying like, oh, this person's going to be the educator and the volunteer services person. And by the way, they're going to do the collection, like maybe there's something we can do there and we can get um, everyone's thoughts on, on what the sort of best form description might look like.
Yes. And with that, um, I'm repertory in most way. Yes. Um, another thought in diversifying the fields and what kind of programs we can be connecting with, trades backgrounds or art school backgrounds. Um, have different perspectives. Yes. I love that. I love all of this. You guys have brought, you all have brought so much to the table in terms of like ideas. And we've written down literally all of them. Um, and we're going to talk about them. We have a board meeting tomorrow because we wanted to just talk about everything that you all shared and what our, what our next steps are going to be. Um, so thank you so much for sharing, but I also want to take this moment to say that we are wrapping up. We were over the time that we wanted to spend with you all, but you all had such great ideas that we wanted to make sure that you were, you were heard and that we were able to hear all of these ideas. Um, and kind of get that going. So please know that we are looking to have additional town halls. Um, please know that there will be surveys, there will be questions. Please keep in touch with us. Um, you can either email Ciara or I at president@nationalEMPnetwork.org. Um, also all the board members have emails that are their firstname@EMP@nationalEMPnetwork.org. So you can email any of us if you have questions. There's, um, there's so many things. So please know that we are here for you and we're excited to, to work with you all this next, this, this next year, really.
Yeah, and on our website, um, there's a email list that are all the contacts if, if people are looking for that email. We can put it in the chat too. I think I did put it in the chat, but let me put it in the chat again.
Yes, and please apply to join the board. There were so many great ideas in this group and I know that you all would do such great things on the board. So please send in an application. It would be amazing to have you all. Have a great evening. Thank you all so much for your time. Thank you so much for your expertise. Thank you, thank you, thank you.